Just tonight.
Good evening, Rolling Meadows. This is the committee, the whole meeting for December 11th, 2018. Mr. Crumstock, I believe we start with you with the utility rate study.
Thank you very much, Mayor and City Council. Obviously, between myself, Melissa Gallagher, and obviously Representative from, or firm Baxter Woodman, who's been doing another update to our study, we are actually back here just to do a quick presentation about what's being stated, what has been shown, and obviously, as we say in the write-up, the option to sell $4 million to do some bond work and some catch-up on some utilities actually helps in stabilizing the rates for a few years. So with that, I do turn it over to Finance Director Melissa Gallagher, who would actually start part of the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Crumstock, and good evening. The Ad-Hoc Capital Improvements Committee has been reviewing items from the draft utility rate study for many months now. And I would really like to, first off, express my appreciation to the city's Ad-Hoc Capital Improvements Committee, who include Alderman Diastis, Alderman Williams, our resident members Steve Hollish, Bob Loesch, Jack Elatherio, and Assistant Public Works Director Rob Horn, and Public Works Director Fred Vogt, and myself. The focus on the utility rate study for 2015 had several key elements. Similar to the 2015 study, we are updating to include some of those elements and even further. There is a funding scenario which incorporates bonds, as City Manager Crumstock mentioned, and as we've been discussing with the City Council. And before turning it over to Chris Buckley of Baxter and Woodman, our engineering firm who performed the study, I wanted to go through some of those elements with you. One of the things that we've been working on are running scenarios and throughout the process and bringing them back to the Ad-Hoc Capital Improvements Committee. And in your write-up too, in the council packet, you'll find out some of those scenarios. Right now, the draft study is still a draft, and it will be for some time, but I also wanted to add that we're not releasing it just yet because it's still going through its final vetting stages as well. Some of the key elements include rate stabilization. That's one of the key criteria that we're looking at for the city's residents and businesses. One of the things that we've been looking at for some time now is trying to figure out how to stabilize the rates for our residents and businesses. By working with Baxter and Woodman, this draft study helps us accomplish that goal and work towards that goal. The second item for the key elements would be the capital project stabilization. And what we've been doing for several months now is ensuring that we're looking at our capital projects, prioritizing them, and investing where those items are absolutely necessary for water, sewer, stormwater, capital improvement projects. In addition, Public Works has extended their long-term planning well beyond our five-year capital plan. And what we've been doing is making sure that, for instance, planning our road program and our utilities program in tandem. We've been rightsizing the capital plan to make sure that we're at a certain level every year over year, so we don't have large swings. And so it's about a $2 million capital program year over year. Another key element for this program and draft study was to develop a long-range plan, longer range than we have been doing. And one of the significant accomplishments this year was the City Council approving the Jawa contract. What that did for the city was provide certainty and stability in our Jawa increases over time. About 5% is capped at the Jawa rate from the City of Chicago. That's the water that we receive from the City of Chicago. And then the minimums were eliminated. Future rate increases are capped, as I mentioned, and this really does help our businesses plan and our residents plan for the future and create certainty in the marketplace. Remember that our annual Jawa increases have been much higher than 5%. In our utility rate study, what we've done is used a 5% increases in the utility draft rate study. And I also wanted to remind you, in terms of Jawa in general, that it's about a third of the total expenses in the utilities rate fund. So it's a very important expenditure line item. We are striving towards a fund balance reserve policy, and that's one of the things that we're looking at as well. And the draft utility rate study helps us. What we're trying to do is make sure that we have adequate reserves for our cash needs, our operating needs, our capital, and our debt service, as well as the city's water supply. And it's very important to look at all those components. And why I mentioned the elements, I wanted to turn it over to Chris Buckley, and then we'll discuss our capital project plan as well. But Chris is going to review the scenarios in the capital, in the draft utility rate study, and I'll turn it over to Chris. Chris?
City Council, my name is Chris Buckley with Baxter and Woodman. Thank you for having me today. It's a pleasure to speak to you about probably all of our favorite topic is rate increases and rate studies. So a little bit of background on how the rate study, we typically do rate studies, is we are looking at your expenses, your capital planning, your debt service, and looking at it over a five-year period and seeing what expenses you might entail, which are usually, for most operations and similar type expenses, are on an inflationary basis. So we're looking to see it's 1%, 2%, or some higher indications, maybe like health insurance, which might bump up on the 5% or higher percentage. And capital improvements, which of course is of vital importance to maintaining your water infrastructure, and that has usually a huge impact on rates in general. On the revenue side, we look at what your rates are now and how much water you are billing your residents. And for point of reference, water demand and water billing traditionally or have been across the Chicago-owned area decreasing. So what we do is pick a number where we think that the revenues are going to be at, and minus any new rate increases, we keep it flat. Of course, five years is a conservative measure, so that we don't overestimate revenues. So the long and the short of it is, we try to estimate what your revenues are and have those as a low estimate. And then we try to figure out what your expenses are going to be, and we try to overestimate those a little bit, so that when the curves meet, we have a conservative approach. And of course, that's adjusted year by year. So we looked at several scenarios that are basically looking at how much you're investing in your capital infrastructure, how much that's going to cost year by year over five years, as well as the operating expenses, and then what you need to do to fund those improvements and your operating expenses. So Scenario 1 is basically what we call a baseline scenario. So your expenses, right, as you have them now, capital included, and anything moving forward for five years with no rate increases. Just keep it flat, zero, and project that over five years. Now, what typically happens, and it's in the case for Scenario 1, is that the expenses are kind of going up as a parabola, and the revenues are then coming down as a parabola. And eventually, you get to the point where frequently, within a few years, you are starting to run below a fund balance and getting into negative territory. And it's typically not a scenario that we recommend because it's not fiscally sustainable, and it's not your fiduciary duty. So Scenario 1 is no increases for five years, but funding the capital as proposed, and we're not recommending this. Scenario 2 continues the rate increases that you've been doing for the last few years, which is 7% for water, 5% for sewer, 5% increase for stormwater, and continue doing that for five years. So in this case, obviously, you're raising the rates higher, and you are keeping up with inflation and expenses. However, at this point of the status of the fund, you're actually in very good shape. And increasing this for five years at those levels is also not recommended because simply you're getting too much money into the fund to be fiscally conservative. You could, of course, do that and build up a balance in your fund for future capital, but at this point, we don't see that's necessary based on the capital improvements planning that you guys have done and what we're seeing. So continuing to raise the rates at those percentage levels every year for five years, we don't recommend either. Scenario 3 incorporates a bond issue. Bond issue is like a shot of adrenaline into the fund. So you'll be issuing bonds to receive an influx of money of $4 million. And based on that, with your current fund balances, again, you don't need to raise the rates. The bond issue will cover the engineering, construction costs over the next few years. And basically, the fund is going to do a big ski slope up and then come back down and then kind of motor along. But there's sufficient fund balances, plus how a bond issue and the projects, how they occur over time, spread out the amount of money you have in your account. So at the end of five years, we might take another look at this, but for five years with the bond issue, you're in pretty good shape without any rate increases. Scenario 4 then does the bond increase of $4 million with the bond issue and raises the rates 755, as I've indicated. So if obviously Scenario 3 seems to be okay, Scenario 4 is again going over the top. Sure, you will get a lot of money into the fund, but again, in order to be responsible, we don't see the point of that. So putting the bond issue and the rate increases is also not advised at this time. So Scenario 3 is the recommended option to be fiscally conservative, but yes, also fiscally responsible, and to invest in your infrastructure the way you guys should be to meet your water system and sewer system and stormwater needs.
So I would like to summarize, and of course, we're here for questions as well to Chris Buckley while he's here from Baxter and Woodman. But again, one of the key things to take away for Scenario Number 3, as Chris has mentioned, is that it's stabilizing the rates. What we've done is make sure that we've done our prioritization to the capital, and we're covering all our expenses without an increase to the rates. The bond issuance of $4 million, if you check the council packet, we've been looking at some prospective bond projects. The Public Works Department has been working on this for several months now. We discussed this a couple of meetings already with the Ad-Hoc Capitals Improvements Committee. And in the packet, they're outlined here, and I have Assistant Public Works Director Rob Horn as well, but I'm just going to review them briefly. What we've done basically is broken them out into three projects. It is an estimated cost of $4.6 million in the packet, but we did footnote at the bottom that, well, it is believed that through the bidding process or through other fund balance availability or expenditure reductions, the amount would be around $4 million for the borrowing. What we're looking at is a water main replacement project. I'll just preface this, that this is all water main projects, so underground utilities, and the water main replacements in the Waverly Park area, which some engineering is already budgeted for in 2019. Project 2 would be the South Street Plum Grove area water main project. Again, there's budgeted engineering for 2019 already in the budget. And then the Arbor Drive Water Main Project, which that project right now is sitting in the budget for 2019 is $500,000, but then for the next four years. So that project would be done all over in a process of about a year, a year and a half. So those are the three projects that's outlined right now in the capital project planning process for prospective bonds. What I wanted to do is just leave that for questions, as we've summarized. Again, the draft utility rate study is still being fully vetted, but these are the primary scenarios that we've come up with so far as far as the projects itself.
And we brought it in, as we said, for a draft discussion, and obviously, the ad hoc has looked at it a little bit, but also it's more just for informational base.
So do we have any questions for clarification? Mr. Cannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Melissa, I was wondering if you could tell me, do we have any potential projects for sewer in the next couple of years that are, you know, where sewers are failing? Where is the lining program solving that issue for right now?
And I'll have Assistant Public Works Director speak to that, but we do have sewer items budgeted as well.
Part of when we were looking at the bond, we were really looking at the sewer side and the water side, because the sewer side, in utilities, we have three distinct divisions in the budget. So you obviously have water, stormwater, and storm sewer. So when we were looking at roughly stabilization between that $2 and $2.5 million worth of work, but we were also looking at a $4 million projects. And water projects typically have the higher priority because of our older infrastructure. So we do have part of the 10-year capital improvement program, sewer projects that do continue with, but it's not part of that discussion that we were having with this.
So are any of those potential sewer projects match up with any of these things that are on these project lists?
No. The primary sewer project that we had considered preliminarily was related to Brookview Sunset underdeveloped areas. But given the approvals required to get that through a process, through SSAs and other discussions we've had with the council in the past, given the tight timeframes that are put on a bond issue, we felt it was more appropriate to stick to our high priority water main failure areas.
Okay. And I guess this, I would direct this to you, Melissa or Barry. So the $4 million we're talking here, is this over and above the bonds that we had? The first one we've approved and is processed now, and then we have a second one potential? Is any of that money going to come out of there?
That's part of the second bond, that $4 million.
All $4 million?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I thought some of that money is designated for roads also, isn't it?
There was nothing that we talked about roads. We kept it as full infrastructure, underground, and obviously, the stations.
Okay. Thanks for the answers.
Mr. Budmetsch?
Okay, so we're looking at a 20-year bond to pay off this, is that the deal?
Yes. Similar to the 2018 bonds that were just issued, yes.
Any further questions for clarification? Is there any, is there any discussion? Mr. Crumstock, do you need anything from us?
No. As we said, this is informational, so everybody sees some of the work that's been done, obviously, with the Ad-Hoc Committee, with some of the additional work that we're preparing for the bonds. And also, as we've had discussions in the past, how do you get to rate stabilization?
Thank you. I guess we're up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Thank you, Rob. Forest Preserve, Cook County Strategic Plan. Mr. Crumstock, can you start us off?
Sure thing. Obviously, as we said in the write-up, the Forest Preserves of Cook County have been sharing their strategic plan throughout the area. And tonight, we do have the Director of Resource Management, John McCabe, who has a short presentation, just going over what they're doing and also reintroduce some of the items with the Forest Preserve. I will mention that we did have Public Works Director Fred Vogt did mention to Mr. McCabe about potentially down the line with Bussy Woods that we might be looking at overpass. So with that, I do introduce Director of Resource Management, John McCabe, and hopefully, the PowerPoint works correctly.
Welcome, Mr. McCabe. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Alderman, staff, and members of the general public. As I was introduced, John McCabe, Director of Department of Resource Management. I've been around the Forest Preserve for a little while, roughly about 25 years. And one thing I can guarantee you is that anything I'm going to talk about related to water is going to be fun. Okay, so. And I've done a few of these now, where we're reaching out to communities that are near the Forest Preserve, just to sort of say hello. So to put you at ease, I'm not here to ask for anything, okay? Because a few other elected officials we've talked to figured we were asking for something, and that's why we wanted to talk to you. Simply want to say hello and try to reconnect with the community. I would just like to also say, I'm a resident of Elk Grove, so I'm very familiar with Rolling Meadows, and I'm in and out of town here on a regular basis. And so really appreciate you taking the time to listen to me tonight. I'll try to be brief, as I know you have a lot of business to attend to, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have when I'm done or just throw your hand up when I'm running through this thing. All right? Thank you. So first, I want to start out with just a couple of quick numbers here, that the Forest Preserves is made up of just over 69,000 acres, which roughly accounts for 11% of the land in Cook County. In a county of 5.2 million people, the second-largest county, second-most-populated county in the United States, it's a pretty incredible number that we have protected that much land. The district's mission, which I'm not going to read through this whole thing, but just hit a couple of the key points that I'm excited about, which is restore, restock, and protect the land. We also have an obligation to engage the public, whether it's through education or recreation. And a lot of the, my job is trying to figure out that balance between conservation and recreation. And of course, as the Director of Resource Management, I'm leaning to the conservation side of things. We have some very interesting conversations with our permits department. The Brookfield Zoo and the Chicago Botanic Garden, a lot of people do not know that they are on Forest Preserve property, and that's a key partner of ours. Brookfield Zoo since the early 1920s and the Chicago Botanic Garden since the 1970s, two very strong partners of ours. Just a couple of other numbers to throw at you, six nature centers. The one that's closest to here, and that I hope you visited at some point, is Crabtree Nature Center up in the Barrington area. 2,000 acres of fishing lakes. The largest and closest one to you guys, of course, is Bussy Woods. Boat rentals, canoe and kayak at that particular location. We have three aquatic centers throughout the county. 300 picnic groves. Bussy Woods, again, a very popular picnic place. Our busiest forest preserve in the entire system is Bussy Woods. Cross-country skiing throughout the Forest Preserve, sledding hills, snowmobiling, three off-leash dog areas, 10 golf courses, driving ranges. We even added a zip line, which is down in Western Springs, which again, from the resource management conservation side of things, not so happy about. From the permitting side, engagement piece, it's been a huge success for us. Five campgrounds in the Forest Preserve as well, the nearest one being Camp Reinburg, which is up in Palatine. So we've always had campgrounds, but they weren't as well taken care of as they could have been. It wasn't a main focus of the Forest Preserve. When Superintendent Randall came onboard in 2010, this was one of his goals, along with President Preckwinkle, was to reestablish this. They felt like it was an excellent way to engage people in the Forest Preserve, get people to come into the Forest Preserve, especially people coming out of the city, or even if you just, you didn't have enough time to go up to Wisconsin, head out to Michigan, go to Indiana, you could just pop up to Camp Reinburg here in Palatine and spend a weekend in the Forest Preserve. This has been a huge success for us, the five campgrounds. Over 100,000 campers in the last two years across the five campgrounds that we have now. Picnics, as I mentioned, this is, when we talk to people and they ask, "How many of you have been in the Forest Preserve?", this is the number-one thing, is the picnic, right? Everybody remembers a picnic when you were little, or going to an office get-together or something along those lines out in the Forest Preserve. So while I'm mentioning that, can I ask how many people in here, by a show of hands, have been to the Forest Preserves? Okay, that's excellent. Very, very good. Yeah, put your hand up, even if you weren't there, right? Thank you for your participation in the Forest Preserves. 32 picnic groves in Bussy Woods, as I mentioned, it's our busiest Forest Preserve overall. So I'm going to talk about that a little bit as we continue through the program. We host many, many, many events throughout the Forest Preserve. This particular event, the kids climb that our department runs at our special events out at our River Trail Nature Center, which is over in Northbrook, but we also do this at our Crabtree Nature Center, Explore the Forest event, which is in early June. And just a quick snapshot of a bunch of different activities that you could do here in the Forest Preserve. The other thing, and again, on the conservation side, which is really the important piece to me, is recognizing the 23 Illinois nature preserves that we have, along with the four Illinois land and water reserves. So even though the Forest Preserve District provides this protection, these are state-level protections that supersede the Forest Preserve. So at these particular sites where we have this additional protection, even we need to ask permission from the state if we're going to make improvements to the site or do anything there from like a construction site. And the nearest one here is Bussy Woods. There's a incredible Flatwoods there, and it's a dedicated Illinois nature preserve. Natural Communities, again, across our 70,000 acres, there's over 38 natural communities, as recognized by state biologists, in Cook County with 5.2 million people. Just an incredible resource that people need to get out and explore. And just a couple of pictures here showing you some of those habitats. Endangered species, so the Forest Preserve provides a home for over 100 endangered species, and that's on the plant and animal side, including insects like the Heinz Emerald Dragonfly, as seen in this particular photo. And again, thinking about if we weren't here, these 100 endangered species would be, would be gone. Couple other pictures, the bald eagle up there on the left, I don't know how many of you have seen the bald eagles in Bussy Woods off of I-90, where the big bald eagle nest is at. The North American River Otter in the bottom right-hand corner, those have also been spotted in Bussy Woods. I have not, I have yet to see one except for the photos, and when our wildlife biology team had captured one, which we took to Brookfield Zoo, they implanted a transmitter in it, and working with our partners at Max McGraw Wildlife, we're tracking the otter to see where it goes and what it's doing. So I've seen the captured one, but I haven't seen it live out in action. Really, really cool animal. You see him up close, you realize that is a voracious predator, that you would not want to have your hand near it when it's eating a meal. All right. So getting back to some of the administrative side of the job is, and the strategic planning that was mentioned, is this Next Century Conservation Plan. President Preckwinkle and Superintendent Randall released this plan in January of 2014. And it's hard to believe, but it is true, that an organization that celebrated their centennial, their 100-year in 2015, did not have a plan or a guiding document like this until January of 2014. So it focused on four main goals, goal number one being nature. And one of the key goals in the nature column was restoring 30,000 of our acres to good ecological quality in 25 years. So now, when I started working here, I was 6'2" with a full head of hair. That really knocked me down even more when I heard that I'm going to have to restore 30,000 acres in 25 years. But it was really cool that the administration recognized the importance of that and the value of that. The second goal is tied to people. We can't get this work done. We can't continue to run the Forest Preserve if we don't have the support of people, if we don't have them engaged in what we're doing. The third goal is the economy piece. Okay, we need to build that economic case for the support of the Forest Preserve. And we need municipalities like Rolling Meadows, like Elk Grove, to recognize the economic engine that the Forest Preserve could be. When you have tens of thousands of people every weekend in Bussy Woods, they need to go somewhere to pick up groceries and barbecue stuff and get something to drink and put gas in their car when they come to these places. They need fishing, all of that kind of stuff. These neighboring communities can help support that, and at the same time, there's supporting the communities. And the fourth goal is leadership. The difficult thing that's always sort of been the case with the Forest Preserve is the administrative changes that have happened over the years. Superintendent Randall and President Preckwinkle have tried to address that by creating a Conservation and Policy Council that's been put in place, that's going to hold the Forest Preserve District to the tasks that were set forth in this Next Century Conservation Plan, even when those administrations change. So we're hopeful, I am, with 25 So we're hopeful, I am, with 25 years invested in the Forest Preserve, that that's going to work out positively. And it's been a very good operation so far over the last couple of years. And the plan that I'm really excited about that came out of that was our Natural and Cultural Resources Master Plan. And the main focus of this was, we worked on this with the Prairie Research Institute out of the University of Illinois. And the main focus was figuring out how we were going to address the 30,000-acre restoration piece. The other important thing that came out of this is the cultural resource side of things. The Forest Preserve District holds a lot of the archaeological history in Cook County that has not been disturbed or developed, like municipalities and villages that we're in right now. And so being able to address those issues and find where they're at, make sure that we're protecting these un-renewable resources, which we have a legal obligation to do, and then interpreting that and learning the history that that can tell us about, very important. All right, Bussy Woods, just a little bit of a transition into talking about those four goals that we talked about and how it relates back to Bussy Woods. So on the nature side of things, again, from that prioritization piece, Bussy Woods is the number-three priority block in the Forest Preserve. So we knew it was high-quality, but when we looked at this very closely, it became clear it was at the top of the list. And we're doing a lot of restoration work, a lot of prescription burning out there now, and it's just going to continue to improve. From the people's side of things, over 10 miles of trail, I'm sure many of you have either ridden your bike on the trail or walked a bike trail. It's an excellent way to engage people. The picnic grove, snowmobiling, almost everybody knows the Elk Pen, the fishing and boating. We have a boathouse there now where we do canoe, kayak and boat rentals. We host the Illinois High School Association's Bass Fishing Tournament there in the spring, that's a really cool event. And again, just hundreds and hundreds of picnics. There's a picture of the boathouse right there in the background. Again, I talked about the economy piece. All of these people coming into Bussy Woods are utilizing the neighboring communities to purchase things and fill up their car with gas. And then the leadership piece, as I mentioned before, how important that is for us. Superintendent Randall was awarded the Civic Federation of Motorized Solutions Excellence in Public Service Award, which is just unprecedented, so a really cool thing. Just sort of a list of some of the partners that we work with here, Friends of the Forest Preserve, Shed Aquarium, a good group of people. All right, benefits of the Preserve, so people always say, you know, like, "Well, yeah, I like to go picnic there, I like to ride the bike trail." But what does the Forest Preserve really do for us? Well, it maintains biodiversity, and the bottom line is, if it wasn't here, none of these plants and animals would exist anymore in Cook County. Protect the natural and cultural resources, largest clean air resource in the region, there's no doubt about it. And even just from a driving standpoint, if you're driving down Higgins Road there where Bussy Woods is at, that's just a more comfortable ride than it is if you're on Route 53 or sitting in some heavy traffic where you can't see the nice trees or the lake. Source of community engagement and a public resource for education. You know, the Forest Preserves, and just take a look at this transition slide, from the early 18, late 1800s to where we're at today. The red is development, and the green that you're going to see left here at the very end is the Forest Preserve. Okay, so that's been a big difference in really a short period of time, when you think about the adaptation from the plant and animal side of things. So the fact that we still have some of the plants and animals that we have, I think is pretty incredible. And let's all agree that if we hadn't protected this Forest Preserve back 100 years ago, or started to protect it, that that entire map would likely be all red. So again, when you look at that even, and I said it was 11%, it still does not look like a lot when you compare it to all the red in that particular map on the right. All right, if you want to see more, we had a documentary that was put together as part of our centennial celebration, and it was pretty cool. And I'm not saying that because it won an Emmy and because I'm in it. You know, I have a face for radio, but they actually put me in the documentary and put enough makeup on me that people didn't think it was a horror show, and it was pretty successful. You can link to it right there, and just Google it now, and you can see it online. So it's pretty cool. All right, I think that's really about it. I think I'm going to go into the question phase, but before I do that, I would like to share with you our calendar for 2019, which I have a box here that I'll leave behind with, I don't know, there's 50 or 60 of them in there that you can pass around. And it has, each month has a different photo from the Forest Preserve District, and on the dates, there's, any special events that the Forest Preserve is hosting are marked out on the calendar throughout the year. There's also contact information in here, but free for the taking. If you would like more, we have them at our nature centers, and I'll be happy to send them along, pass them out to your constituents, and they look nice on your wall. Questions?
Thank you. Anybody from the council have questions? Mr. Cannon?
Thank you, Smear. I was wondering, over near Highland Woods Golf Course on Roselle Road, you guys still have a house that was considered a watchman's house, that's sitting there empty now? Do you have plans for that building, or is this going to sit empty, or are you going to restock with an employee?
So you're asking about the watchman's house on Roselle Road, just north of Central there, yes. There's no plans to put anybody in that house, that's on our to-be-demoted list. And as you can imagine, across the Forest Preserves, we have, that list is somewhat long, so yeah, we plan on...
I'm glad to hear that, that's great.
Yeah, and we plan on removing that residence altogether.
Great, and then could you tell me what's going on with the bike path as you go down past that house? It looks like you're doing some major work there, I'm not really sure what's going on.
Right, that's actually a project that's being spearheaded by the Village of Schaumburg, that they're putting a bridge in that's going to span over Central there. So it's going to come down from, along the road there, cross over Central, and then tie in with our Paul Douglas Bike Trail. They're looking to do that, so that makes a connection all the way up to Harper College. So you'll be able to go from the Schaumburg Trail now, cross over that bridge, and then up our Paul Douglas Trail to connect to Harper College.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Crumstock, it's Commonwealth Edison Time.
Yes, thank you. Obviously, as External Affairs Manager Joe Turnage comes back to the mic, you saw him recently. We're just doing a very brief discussion about regarding the November winter storms, and we do know it was over 1,000 residents that were affected by this, and the numbers went down over those next few days. Obviously, there's one Alderman who has affected most of the time that this was happening. And we do appreciate some of the feedback that we were getting from Mr. Turnage, and obviously ComEd, it just, there's some learning lessons that they had, and we've given some feedback. I know that Alderman Majikis also gave some feedback about some of their communication pieces, but with that, we just wanted to do some additional discussion, and then two of the feeders that actually had most of the outages that we had for the residents. With that, I turn it over to Joe again.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor, Alderman, trustees, residents and village officials. Initially, when we were asked out here to speak, we had two items that we were talking about, as Barry mentioned. We had, there was some concern on two of our feeders, of which I have Craig Creamian and Ken Cicirelli from our Operations Department, and they're going to discuss those things. One of the things that we wanted to do was, we're prepared to talk about this, however, we're not prepared to talk about the storm today. Reason being is because our senior executives, they want to host one forum to talk about what transpired with the storm. So they'll be addressing the storm at the Northwest Municipal Council meeting. So we encourage all of the village trustees, board, Alderman members to attend that meeting, and it will be held on December 17th. Okay? We thought it would be best to, that you guys hear it from our senior leadership, that way one message gets out. If there are any single items that we need to talk about, I can always come back out to the village and address those single items with any of the residents or with Barry directly. So we will be talking about two feeders today, or two circuits. So I'll take any questions at this time, before I turn it over to Ken, who will address these two individual feeders.
Questions? We'll recap towards the end.
All right, thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Joe. Good evening, Mayor and Village Administrators. My name is Ken Cicirelli, I'm the Engineering and Reliability Manager for ComEd. I do have a presentation, I wanted to go through this and really kind of capture some of the highlights as it relates to the two circuits that we refer to as Echo 698 and Echo 699. Go to the next slide, or I think maybe I control that. Very good, I'll skip through that. Just to kind of give an indication of where we saw the outages from this current winter storm, which primarily, obviously, was from heavy snow and high winds, as it relates to Circuit Echo 698. One of the things we did do from an engineering perspective is, we took a look at these outages as they related to the outages in the 2010, 11 and 12 storms that did come through the entire service territory, and kind of correlated that towards where do we still have potential risk and opportunity. Again, here you can see those areas that are highlighted in the, kind of the blue dots as to where we saw some additional outages on here. And we went back and correlated that to, I think really what has been pretty much a common theme on both of these circuits, and that is vegetation risk. Really here today to talk about some of the next steps and opportunities that we want to proceed with, with these two circuits. Just as a side note, since 2012, we have done some work on this feeder, non-related to particularly to, say, vegetation or storm hardening, as we call it. Storm hardening, from our perspective, is, just as it stated, truly all about making sure that our circuits and our infrastructure has enough resiliency in it to get through both summer storms and winter storms. Obviously, our focus since 2010 and 2012, through all our legislative efforts, and of course, a lot of the investments that we have put in the system have focused on summer storm mitigation. Some of the things we have done on Echo 698, we have replaced some cable. Cable faults on these two circuits, 698 and 699, have not been a big driver over the years, but I just wanted to indicate that we have done some cable replacement work through some of the infrastructure improvements. Some of the things that we've been also doing since probably about the 2010 timeframe, a little bit prior to that, again, through the infrastructure improvement efforts, is installing distribution automation devices, which are basically smart switches. Switches that basically just identify, talk to one another, and you know, basically speak and figure out where the problem is on the system, and then reconfigure themselves to basically reduce the number of customers that have been impacted. And we have installed many switches on Echo 698, which have, over the last, at least four or five years, have improved the reliability overall on those circuits. One of the things we did do in 2012, both on 698 and 699, which is what I'm really going to focus on here shortly, is we went with some enhanced storm hardening, vegetation tree trimming, basically tried to get an aggressive approach to the tree trimming in regards to trying to get more sustainability on mitigating tree-related type outages. I'm going to come back to the spacer cable installation here in a moment, but this is really the solution that we're going down the path now, and it's more of an engineering-type solution, and I'll explain that in a minute. Just wanted to jump ahead. Some of the areas, as I had indicated, we went before, we did a correlation to the recent winter storm outages and the outages that impacted the areas that are fed by 698 and 699, specifically in the 2010 to 2012 timeframe. And really looked at, some of the opportunities we looked at where there's the most heavily vegetated, and these are some of our circuit maps here that I'm indicating, and these are areas, again, that were, this particular area here around George Street, between Dove and Meadow, did also, again, continue to have some issues with the heavy snow, which is, again, tends to be indicative of that we still have a vegetation issue out here. Another area out here on Echo 698 that we also looked at back in 2012 with some solutions, again, in 2012, we decided to go along the route of going with more of an aggressive tree trimming perspective. And I'll explain a little bit of our protocol and approach to how we make those decisions, and then I'll get back to that spacer cable. Wanted to talk a little bit too about 699. Again, some of the areas here. One of the areas around the Cook County Circuit Court Building, just off of Euclid, that area there was hit very hard in the 2010 to 2012 storm period. We did do a lot of aggressive vegetation trimming in that area. That area was one of the few areas on these two circuits that did not have any issues in this past winter storm. In a very similar situation, you know, we have done some underground cable replacement, again, to improve the overall reliability, but as I stated before, the real issues on both these circuits are more vegetation-driven. Areas that we looked at, again, back in 2012, where we did implement more aggressive vegetation solutions are shown on this map here, and also in these particular areas here with these two circuits. I want to go back now, talk a little bit, and get to what are we doing moving forward. Ultimately, one of the things we look at with our vegetation department, we look at a multitude of things in vegetated areas, such as growth, the species that are out there, and just enough, just another whole bunch of different trends that ultimately would lead to the fact of making a decision of, do we implement an investment in regards to storm hardening, or an engineering solution, or do we do an aggressive approach on tree trimming and tree removal? In both these circuits, back in 2012, we weighed both those options out and went to the route of going with a more aggressive vegetation review and approach. This last winter storm, as you're aware, exposed some additional risks that we have out there. Even though we have installed distribution automation to reduce customer outage impact, we still obviously saw the fact that there is risk, and we had more vegetation-related outages. I think one of the things that we look at from an engineering perspective is, you know, both the summer storms, where you're looking at more lightning, high wind, and of course, vegetation. And then of course, with this recent storm, looking more at heavy snow, and what impact that has on vegetation and different type of species. In the industry, well, let me first state that, when you look at these circuits, we have a four-year cyclic program on vegetation trimming or tree removal, that in most cases has proven to be very successful over the years. When we do reach a point on certain circuits where the vegetation solution is no longer being sustained, in such a manner that when we trim the tree, we see the trees on a particular circuit, we see improvement for maybe the first year or two, but then when we get to the third or fourth year, when the growth comes back, we start to see more potential of outage and more risk of outage. That's when we go back and reexamine and say, "Well, we don't want to get caught in this never-ending cycle of trimming the trees," and then it grows back and we continue to have problems, so we look for more of a long-range plan. One of these long-range plans, although a little bit more of a higher cost investment for us, is the spacer cable concept. Spacer cable concept is really, it's an industry used across the industry. We've been using it at ComEd probably since about 2008. We've installed hundreds upon hundreds of miles of this across the entire system with a big emphasis after we got hit with the storms in 2010, 2011 and 2012. Basically, this technology, you can see some pictures that are up here. I guess the best way to describe it is, you know, historical industry practice for overhead conductors, overhead wires are basically, we run a three-phase system, so you'll see three phases. It's basically three bare conductors that sit on a crossarm. And as you can imagine, that creates a nice canopy for trees or branches in a highly vegetated area to fall on those and lay across them, ultimately causing a short on the system. And then of course, our circuit breakers, our automation, very similar to your homes, would then operate in... would then operate and, you know, obviously then create or cause an outage. When you look at this spacer cable installation, it basically is a diamond-shaped, it has a messenger wire up on the top. The whole principle is you go from the concept of three phases that create a canopy for a tree to fall on top of it, to this diamond shape with this messenger wire on the top, where ultimately branches could hit the messenger wire on the top and bounce off, but you really don't have a canopy approach. The other thing that is really beneficial with this is the wire is covered. So even if a branch was to get lodged in between the phases there, or the wires, you would not see any type of an outage. These type of installation, again, is a higher investment cost for the utility, has proven to show reliability performance improvements in the range of 80 to 90 percent, not only at ComEd but across the industry. So, you know, our commitment here is now revisiting the performance on these lines, these circuits, realizing that we do still have some additional risk with vegetation. Again, I've indicated some of the areas that we will be taking a look at. And basically, over the next 30 days, we'll be proceeding with, doing some engineering reviews and analysis to look at exactly where, how much that we want to install. Obviously, at some point in time, we'll be issuing designs and be looking for permits from the village. I'm sure you'll be aware, and of course, Joe will be, will provide Joe with the details on exactly where we are going to be installing this spacer cable. We'll be doing it both on 698, 699, as I had indicated on some of the other slides. Looking then, to get some sort of an installation, our preference would be before the spring or summer storms season, which is, you know, for us probably starts, you know, May-June timeframe, and where it really starts to ramp up and accelerate for us is in the July-August timeframe. Ultimately, then we'll be looking for late first quarter, summer, again, maybe the March timeframe to early second quarter, which would be maybe in the April, April-May timeframe to get the installation in. So that ultimately is what our proposal is on these two circuits. And again, we've gone back to the drawing board, if you will, and looked at the fact that we do have some additional vegetation risk, and quite frankly, the enhanced vegetation trimming or tree removal is not being sufficient in this particular areas. Any questions? Anybody has?
Yeah, I do have a couple that I'd like to bring up.
Yes, that's right.
You were speaking about 698, 699, and I know the residents are watching, is what streets are those that are covered? That's, you know, is it my area? I know you showed something up on the map, what, you know, what streets from the courthouse?
So this is, anything that I have in the red here is pretty indicative of what's in the rear lot.
Ward 3.
Right.
Well, I knew it was Ward 3, but.
No, George Street, Ward 3.
And this particular area is going to be a focus, and our focus is really in that area in the red.
Okay, because that will be the focus. But Ms. Majikis said she had to take more heat than I did on these.
Understood.
But, so those are the areas, and I guess my question is, you would be listing the streets, and can we get this presentation downloaded to our website so that if residents want to see what they presented tonight? Or is there a place to?
Yeah, we can talk to them, because there's nothing prepared here in this one, is it?
No, right now, this is where we're looking at. I think if we're going to get out anything to the constituents or put it on your website, I'd like to do it where we've got, I'll call it the final plan.
Okay.
I don't want to mislead anybody, because what we have in the red there is the focus area.
Okay, that's, yeah, those are where I'm at. I think I'll defer to Ms. Majikis, because I'm sure she probably has the first ComEd question.
Well, it was a difficult storm, that's for sure. So the 698, that is by the George Street and everything, the 699 was over more by Flickr, correct?
Right.
Okay. So when you talk along that, the 698, is it going to affect all of that area going all the way up to, let's see, George and, south side of George and north side of South Street were hit the hardest. They were out about 32 hours, 34 hours. I literally did well-being checks on people. I actually had a woman who told me she survived two wars, that this was tougher than that. So the 698, how far will that cover, all the way up to Wilkie and the courthouse? Is that what you're saying? Or is the courthouse part of 698?
So the focus area, where we've identified is the higher risk, and again, this is primarily in the rear lot, where your vegetation is the thickest. We look at a couple things. We look at the main line, and the main line is basically from the circuit breaker out to different tie points to other circuits.
Can I clarify?
Correct, yeah.
So 699 is the Euclid.
699 is mine, not 698. I'm sorry.
If you can click on 698.
See, I think that's Alderman Gallo's Ward, the 698.
You've got two parts. You've got this, the same.
699.
Think this is by the.
Go back to the other slide.
Which one? Which one, Craig?
Circuit map, you had this one here.
Yeah, go ahead.
See, showing like the hardening on this, circuitry is all continuous, and these taps off here, the all across here are fed from this. So if this goes out, all that stuff goes out with it. So just the fact that this doesn't have a red light on it doesn't mean that it's not impacted if we have a problem on this. So not just the red light, it's the circuitry that feeds all this stuff in here.
Good clarity, thanks.
But if you go to the 699, that's the one that's on the third Ward.
Yeah, that's where mine got hit. That's where it got hit the worst.
There's part of the focus. I think the courthouse is somewhere right there.
And Euclid is the next slide.
And then, yeah, this is the taps.
That was more, that's more northwest of where it got hit the worst. So when you, guys were out during the storm and getting the power back on, you know, I saw some tree trimming going on because you had to and stuff like that, but now you're saying you're going to, within the next 30 days, kind of evaluate this and see which the next approach would be on your plan?
Yeah, it's basically looking at long-range sustainable plans.
Okay, so it very well could just be tree trimming? Or you really do, okay.
No, no, that was kind of the point I was trying to make, is that when we do look at opportunities, one of the first things we'll look at in heavy vegetated areas, depending on species and different data, historical data that we have, is do we pursue just aggressive tree trimming?
Right. Because, I mean, haven't you been trimming the trees in the last, for the last year around there? I mean, you said you kind of do it, you know, the one two and then the three, four, you see if it's come back.
I'll tell you.
Because I know mine were trimmed this summer.
So the cycle trim, and you can see, there's vegetation trim cycle, 698 was March of 2017, next one is 2021. And on 699, this is probably what you saw, yeah, March of 2018.
Yeah.
We would have been out there, and the next cycle trim is 2022.
So why we're coming back with that spacer cable is that, you know, the trim approach is not, you know.
Hasn't done.
It's not sustainable.
Right.
That's why we're going to come back with the spacer cable.
Okay. Doesn't AT&amp;T cut trim too, when they do some work?
No.
No.
They don't do any trimming? Okay. All right, thank you.
Other questions? My other question is, so how long until you were able to send out information to the residents about what your action plan is?
We should have, we should have.
Do not go through this again, so.
We should have a solid plan, what's probably.
December 11th.
I would say by the, probably about the second week of January. And when I say solid plan, it's more than just, here's what we want to go after, but I also want to make sure that we have an engineering, a sound engineering plan. And part of that engineering plan is to also collaborate with, rolling metals with the village on permitting, things of that nature.
And so, how will you be communicating to the residents of the city? Through?
I believe I'll go through.
Mailings, or?
I'll go through Joe and let him.
Joe, you want to come up and?
We won't be able to answer that right now as far as how we'll get that message out, but I'll follow up with Barry once we get a solid plan, and we'll work through that and let you know.
Okay.
Joe might be back on Phase 3 in January or February.
And you mentioned there's a December 17 meeting at the Northwest Municipal Conference of Mayors?
That's correct, yes.
And at that time, you're going?
We're going to, we're going to be discussing the storm at that time, and it will be two of our key senior executives there, and they'll take us through what transpired and whatever type of corrective actions that we're going to implement.
Yeah, as you guys know, there's a host of things we'll address, like communication protocols.
Excuse me, yeah, if you could please come to the mic and identify yourself, please.
Craig Cramien, ComEd Director of Electric Operations.
Thank you.
So they're going to address a lot of these issues there, as well as how, you know, how we responded to the storm. So we're really just here to talk about these very specific fears and what we're going to do to fix them, but, you know, the global storm approach, which applies not just to you guys, but, you know, pretty broad customer base, want to get everybody together and make sure that we get, you know, the whole story out at one time.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Yes, sir, Mr. Budmans.
During your report, you mentioned that aggressive tree trimming really helped the far northeast quadrant in the area around the courthouse, so.
Yeah, that's what, basically what the results are showing us at this point, and that's also, you know, multiple summer storms over the years. We haven't had a winter storm like this probably since 2014, and then of course, the blizzard of 2011.
But you're not looking to do that same aggressive work in this area?
No. Looking for more of the longer-range, sustainable engineering solutions.
Could I ask why you wouldn't tie both of them together?
I'm not sure I understand the question. You're talking about tying the aggressive vegetation.
Aggressive tree trimming and the hardening of the wires at the same time?
Yeah, what the history has shown with the spacer cable, which has probably been around since the 1960s, we've only started using it in ComEd probably in the early 2000s, early to mid 2000s, is you don't need to go in and do any aggressive tree trimming in those areas. The initial installation, you need to clear the trees out, obviously, to install the infrastructure, but after that, we won't ignore the areas, we'll still continue to trim in those areas, but there's no need to do both of them. Once you put in the spacer installation with that type of engineering solution, you're, like I said, it's an 80, 90 percent improvement in reliability, you very rarely get any tree-related issues. But again, that, those areas still will be trimmed as part of our normal cyclic program. It's not like we install the spacer cable and then ignore it forever.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, gentlemen. I gather we'll see somebody up here probably next month again.
We'd be happy to come back out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With a big smile.
Mr. Crumstock brings us to number four, liquor sales on Saturday and Sunday.
So obviously, number four deals with, as you said, just weekends, Saturday and Sunday, for obviously restaurants, banquet halls, it's specific to certain items that we actually have. And part of these discussions have actually come up with some of the A1s, A2s, A3s, and obviously, for the last two items with G1, that's the video gaming. In the write-up, we do talk about, this is just specifically start times on weekends. A few of the businesses have said that there's a competitive disadvantage to them for the weekends. They prefer that if they could start at 8 o'clock with mimosos and Bloody Marys, that would be greatly appreciated. We were going to have Anthony Donato actually here, and something came up, so he could not be here, but we do have Vince Barfino from the stadium actually here, if you would like to hear from a business that would actually appreciate this slight change. As the council knows, a few years ago, we did make an accommodation for liquor stores, specifically for the weekend. This accommodation that we are talking about, if the council wants to proceed, is only reducing from 11:00 a.m. start to 8:00 a.m. start. It does help these businesses, it does go to those kind of champagne buffets where one group that we have off of Algonquin Road, they've had to wait to bring out the champagne for that point in time, but at the same point in time, it's just dealing with the business community and helping them out a little bit. So all that staff really is asking for is a discussion. Again, listen, if you would like to hear from stadium's owner, Vince Barfino, a longtime business here, but again, all that staff is asking for at the end of the day is that hopefully Gilconker and the city attorney can create an ordinance that would allow for 8:00 a.m. starts on weekends for those establishments with a Class A, Class A1, A2, A3, the Class D, and the Class G1 liquor license. Staff really came up with the 8:00 a.m. start from some discussions. I know that the mayor was, when we had one discussion with one business, they said 8:00 a.m., then they said 7:00 a.m., then they said 9:00 a.m., but really what we hear is that 8:00 a.m. is really a nice start that they feel for a weekend. And then, that's really where we put it. We feel comfortable with this. Obviously, Plea Chief Nowacki and Deputy Chief Bill Aronson, who's in the back of, we've actually talked about that, we do not see any issues with this lowering just for the weekend. So we feel comfortable with this recommendation, but that is all that we're talking about, just Saturday and Sunday, moving it down from 11:00 to 8:00 a.m.
Does anyone need a question of clarification before I call Vince up? We're now going to open the meeting to members of the audience for 20 minutes to address the city council on matters that are not, that are on the agenda only. We ask that persons wishing to address the city council, keep their comments to five minutes in length. Comments must be addressed to the city council through the mayor, and profanity may not be used in any form. Mr. Barfino, sir, would you step forward?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman, staff, particularly for the G1 license, it would make a huge difference for anybody looking to open a cafe, which is something that we're looking to pursue in 2019. Most of the surrounding communities with cafes all have early opening hours, and it'd be a real disadvantage not to have the weekends at least for a cafe situation, which would be the G1. As far as the restaurant, to be able to open up at 8:00 during football season would be a huge plus, both Saturday and Sunday. I mean, we thrive with college football and NFL football, you know, the fall and winter, and to be able to offer a breakfast buffet and have people come in early, you know, I'm sure it'd be a great draw, and it would also help the situation with the growth of Schaumburg, with all that's going on with the businesses that have been opening up on Plum Grove Road and Gulf Road with the anticipation of what's going to be happening with Motorola property has been a difficult competitive situation, and it'd be nice to have a little bit of an advantage. Couple hours on the weekend, I don't see what the issue might be, but it would be a great help for me as a business owner.
Well, I know that you've put a great deal of money and effort into your business, so as we've had discussions with you and other businesses, I know that this is something that you've looked forward to, so I thank you for coming forward.
Thank you.
That closes the floor for tonight. Are there any other discussions or questions? Yes, Mr. Ken.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess one of the first questions I would ask is, why wouldn't we include holidays in this?
How we would just be putting it, we just talked about weekends, so if the council decides they want to make holidays, that's perfectly fine. When we were out, it was just that people were talking about weekends, they were not talking about holidays.
Oh, that's fine. I'm not being critical, I just think if we're going to do it.
I'm just saying, that's why we brought it here.
Because lots of times, you know, there's holidays where people eat breakfast out, and a lot of families do, it's a big restaurant thing.
Extra New Year's recovery.
Yeah, so I guess I would like to see included holidays, is my opinion.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any other comments or questions, Mr. Budmans?
If we're looking to compete with Schaumburg, they're allowing their restaurants to open and serve liquor at 7:00 in the morning, 7:00 on each day, so, just as a point of information.
Further discussion? Further discussion or comment? We will, yeah, we just want to see this for Mr. Cannon.
Can we recommend then we open at 7:00? I mean, we want to stay competitive. I'm just asking, I'm not, can we make that recommendation?
Like, we left it, we said 8:00, but one of the questions at the end is, is the city council comfortable with lowering the weekend start time? That's really your decision. You know, as the mayor knows, one of the businesses wanted it even earlier, and we thought that was a little extreme at 6:00 AM in the morning, but that's.
Maybe they don't go to bed.
Well, could be, but I mean, we do, we do have, we do have businesses, as I, and restaurants that we speak with, that we, banquet halls, that, you know, as you brought up, you know, Mother's Days, Father's Days, along those lines, where they do special times, so. Staff recommended 8:00, does take a straw vote to, started at 7:00, all favor? That's unanimous. Any other comments or questions that you need direction?
Yeah, just clarification, obviously, we're going to include holidays to the ordinance, it would be 7:00 AM for weekends and holidays, and then, as we said before, as long as you're comfortable, staff is comfortable that this would affect Class A1, A2, A3s, Ds, and G1s.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Krumstak. Thank you, Mr. Barfino, for coming out. We're referring to, you don't look like Fred Vogt, but must be Rob Horn and Elizabeth.
Elizabeth Payne is coming up, too.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm really just here for an introduction and some moral support. So as the city council knows, over the last year, we've handled, or the city council and Planning and Zoning Commission has handled numerous applications for outdoor seating. As a result of convoluted codes and ordinances, we've tried to dress those things up, and here to present some of those recommendations is Elizabeth Payne, our Administrative Services Coordinator.
And as she comes up, we just want to mention, this has actually been talked at the Economic Development Committee for three different meetings, so we do appreciate Alderman, DeSas, and Alderman Majikis for a lot of the vetting, and obviously, Ms. Payne was at those meetings. The last one, Public Works Director Fred Vogt, and the recommendations that you have are from those discussions, and also staff recommendations to make this a little bit easier.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Krumstak. Good evening, members of the council. So as mentioned, over the past year or so, we've had an influx of outdoor seating, three special uses before you, all at the same time, two were for liquor service, and one was because the requested outdoor seating did not meet the bare minimum of the code that we require for administrative approval, so it was brought before the council. Staff was prompted to reevaluate the codes with the help of the Economic Development Committee, and the packet before you this evening contains some of the recommendations, the recommendations of the Economic Development Committee as revised by staff. So we are available if there are any questions. The highlights are listed in your packets as well, so happy to answer any questions.
Do council, questions? Mr. Budmats?
Do we need to sell liquor and serve it outdoors at 7:00 in the morning? Is the question.
No, yeah, we just, on the weekends.
Yeah, I don't know, I'm just asking. It looks like we're going to be having outdoor liquor sales at 7:00 in the morning, and if I live next door, that I might object a little bit, versus it being inside.
We can make that a part of the zoning, if that's what you want, that liquor sales for the outside doesn't kick in until, back to 11:00 or 10:00, but we can restrict when liquor sales are outside.
Yes. Any other comments, questions? Is Payne, I cut off, wasn't that painless?
Well, no, I was here.
Yes. Thank you. Are we, anything other direction, Mr. Krumstak?
That is it for this meeting.
Okay. That brings us to a request to go into closed session. Is there a motion to go into closed session for the matter of personnel, number 5 IL CS120-2 of the L.I. Open Meeting Act? Do I have such a motion? Mr. Baner is made that, is it second? Is there any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
DeSas.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Cannon.
Budmats.
Yes.
Majikis.
Yes, my pleasure.
Gallo.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, as we will now go into closed session, the press and the audience are advised, the council does not plan on taking any action upon returning to open session.